Folks, according to my watch, it's 6:30, 6:31 to be exact. And I want to call this meeting to order. We'll have just a moment of silence before we start, please. Have a second from Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry. The floor is open for public comment.
Tom Friss, 98 Friss Road. I really have two things. One is very simple. Is when trash is all over the place, what's the procedure? You call Angie. And then if the person's not there at their home, and then you collect it, if they're not in town, and put it in down here. Is that sort of?
That's kosher, but. Uh, I assume you're talking about a garbage can or something that the bears have gotten into. Angie, what's the normal procedure?
So in this particular case, they left me a message and I called the homeowner who was out of town. They don't live here full-time. And I explained the situation. I attached the new solid waste ordinance, the list of pre-approved bear-resistant containers, and the Bear Wise brochure you did for Land Care, and just explained the new process to them. And I told them that a kind neighbor was picking up their trash, but I couldn't guarantee that that would happen all the time. And they needed to alert their renters or guests to secure their trash or use the convenience center. I never heard back from them, so.
Okay.
The question is, can we, if we do pick it up, can we use that?
Absolutely.
Bag or anything like?
Absolutely.
The second issue is, I know it's a personnel matter, but any clarification on what happened with the town management would be good for all of us. We're all confused.
Commissioner has accepted his letter of resignation on yesterday. And that's it. That's all I can say about it, but Tom, tell you the truth.
Thank you. I want to start out with something good. Please give Michael Harrison a real pat on the back. You would not believe John Knox in this day and of today. It's just like he took a vacuum cleaner. It's wonderful, and I thank you. I appreciate each one of you and each staff member.
Thank you, Claire. Michael does a wonderful job. There's no doubt about that. And he's got those earphones on. Next. Yes, ma'am.
Shirley Mitchell, 201 Harmony Lane. I thank God for Ben Blackburn, and then he came back. And I'm so grateful to your wife and your children. And I just am lauded. Thank you.
Thank you. We're all very appreciative of Ben being back. If we could just dig deep enough to get the roots out of Cherryville. But we can't. That's his home.
I have two things. I want to call attention, you will see later tonight in your packet, an application for a grant that a group of volunteer citizens, oh, my name, I'm sorry. Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland, please. You'll see a grant that has, is on just a few pages, but it has involved many, many hours, days and nights of work by a group of volunteers related to the Land Care Committee. And I just want to thank them for their ongoing work. I know all these things are an ongoing process, very fluid, but I want to thank them for their work. The second is, I see Kerrigan here. And while it's hard to find the Black Mountain News, the box at the post office has been empty for as long as some of us can remember. And Kerrigan told me last week that they're in Asheville. At what store? At Harris Teeter. If you want to read the Black Mountain News, the place to get one is Harris Teeter in Asheville. But this week's paper has two articles about Montreat right on the front. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, I'm going to thank for the articles, one on the lodge and the court case, and one, do you need permission to hike in Montreat? So one on our trails and one on the lodge, but it's a good way for all of us to stay in touch and for other people to be in touch with Montreat. So thank you, Kerrigan.
You had both articles in the Asheville paper, too. And I saw them earlier this week. Next. Yes, Shirley.
Part two. I was going to wait until maybe Barry Creisman was in here. Shirley Mitchell, 201 Harmony Lane. But I wrote him a letter yesterday that our dead-end sign, whatever you call it, had disappeared. You know, the sign, the whole thing. We have a new one today. And I just, he responds so quickly. And when we had a water issue, it was just that fast as well.
School's getting ready to let out, so protect your signs. I don't know how many times they've replaced South Carolina sign where we live. And they keep replacing it. And maybe it's down at Phil's Barbecue.
Mr. Mayor? Can I just add one item? You'll notice on the agenda later on, if we will be taking action on something that we've not done before, and that is designating two weeks from now as National Public Works Week. It is an excellent opportunity, Shirley, and me and many others who appreciate what we have with our Public Works Department, to say thank you in your own unique way.
I've got one announcement. I had a long conversation with the new Duke Energy Representative for Montreat earlier this week. And they are doing a lot of work in Montreat to upgrade some of the power lines. So they will be stringing new lines and setting new transformers and new poles. I know they're doing work up on Appalachian, Virginia, South Carolina, Mississippi. But there's a lot of work going on. And if you hear a rat-a-tat-tat, that's where they're having to set new poles where there's nothing but rock. So be patient. And it'll take them a little bit of time, but they're trying to upgrade everything in Montreat that they possibly can.
Patty Pyle, 334 Chapman. Last week, if I'm not mistaken, was Town Administrator Appreciation Week? Or if not last week, it was soon. And I neglected to call Angie directly and say, hey, you are the glue, and we thank you so much. And as you all can imagine with the project we're working on, Angie's really important to us. So I just wanted to say a public thank you and tell you, when I hear your voice on the phone, I know things are going to get done, and it really means a lot. So thank you so much.
Angie, for those of you who don't know, what was the new certification you got within the last couple of months?
Master Municipal Clerk.
Master Municipal Clerk. When she came in here that day, we had to open the doors and widen to get her head through. Not really. She, she does a masterful job. Thank you.
Shenandoah Terrace. And just really hadn't thought about this particularly much, but since you were talking about Duke Power doing some upgrading, maybe, I don't know who this would fall under necessarily, but the cell tower that we have in town that looks like a tree, they had to get permission from council to put that in. I mean, they were, they, head by right, had a right to put it, but the town council was many years ago able to put conditions on that tower. And I think it would be lovely for someone in that corporation to perhaps take a look at it again. It's looking a little shabby. So perhaps, I wouldn't think that would fall under Land Care, but I don't know where it would fall within somebody.
Tree board.
Tree board. Tree board. I don't know. But, but town council does have oversight, if I remember correctly. So that might be something for staff to just, it's spruce up time. It's spring. Let's get it fixed, okay?
Mary, I know that Kayla has, has been researching that some. Has some, had some communication. It's just something ongoing, and it's not, it's just to be looked into.
They might need a little extra encouragement to make sure that they do it sometimes. Because it was a rather interesting conversation. I'm just kind of going on. We asked them when they put it in that they didn't just put up an erector set and that they didn't just put up a lollipop tree. And a lot of people comment on that when they come into town. So thanks to Kayla, but I mean, if, if town staff or whoever wants to put a little extra nudging, great.
Don't leave. You're more familiar with it than I am, and we've talked about it before. But the, the building up above the ball field looks like a piece of a garage that never has been completed. Do you remember that?
Oh, absolutely. Would you like me to share what I?
Please.
What I think I remember?
Yes, ma'am.
That was the partially, of the Welch Ball Field. Okay, that's never been finished. My memory of that is that immediately before the steep slopes zoning and ordinance went into effect, she had come very close to meeting the requirements under the old ordinance to build. The council, based on her, the owner's request, delayed implementation by two weeks such that she would be able to get her building permit under the old steep slopes rather than the new steep slopes. My understanding, and I used to ask in January of every year, for years, what's the status? And was always told, well, there's still an active site. I haven't asked that question in years. And I haven't asked that question to my knowledge. And I think that, and I really don't know, perhaps Kayla can inform, does the town of Montreat have any kind of ordinances for inactive sites that are partially built when they have to be taken down? So that's what I remember.
Do you mind if I have Kayla contact you?
Kim, Kayla is working on it.
Issue, working on it now? Okay, good deal.
Whatever you would like, but that's my understanding.
Thank you, ma'am.
It was my understanding back then, Mary, that they had to show progress every so many months or else.
And that is as little as turning a shovel of dirt.
Anyone else? Okay.
Arrington Cox, Virginia Road. I've just been sitting here thinking about this, these bears and the trash. And if I could know when bears have gotten in somebody's trash, I can follow it up with some Bear Wise information. But I don't know unless somebody tells me, so. Is that fair?
I, I think so. If you'll contact, you know, make it a habit to contact Angela. Angela can usually tell you who's reported, you know, that type of thing and so forth. And then she can, can you help her, Angie? Yeah, be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Okay. In fact, I had a, it was last night, I had my neighbor text me and say, there's a horde of bears heading your way. And there were four, mother, younger, older cub, and two younger cubs all down through the yard and so forth. And first time I've seen them this year, and they're, they're really starting to get active. Yes, ma'am.
Did you a bear watcher? Did your bear watcher contact you or a neighbor?
Neighbor. Who has a ring and a security system, and he spotted them.
Okay, so the word is out, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, okay.
Good. Anyone? Okay, I've got about 12 more minutes. So if no one has anything, we'll adjourn and just socialize a little bit until seven o'clock when we can get our regular meeting started. Anyone have anything else burning? Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn until seven. Have a motion from Commissioner Widmer to adjourn until seven. Do have a second. Second. Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Blake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry. We're adjourned until seven o'clock. Let everybody get in place. Everybody say together the Pledge of Allegiance. All bow our heads. Moment of silence before we start, please. All bow our heads, moment of silence before we start, please. I'm in. Commissioners, you've seen the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to adopt the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have no communication really tonight, other than to say that I'd said earlier that Duke Power's going to be doing a lot of line upgrading in the Montry area. Just be aware that maybe some inconveniences and some detours here and there. But they will be upgrading some lines and replacing some poles. Ben, you want to cover the consent agenda and then any other items you might have?
I forgot to write you a note. Could you mention Mr. Stackhouse's passing?
Oh, yeah. Angie, just tell everybody about it.
So Mr. Stefan Stackhouse worked for the town a number of years. I don't remember exactly how much. I want to say upwards of ten. And he passed away last Wednesday after a strong battle with cancer. If you could just remember him and his time here in Montry.
I think all the former commissioners, I know Mary remembers Stefan and Eric does, and several of you may have had contact with him back in the back. Yep, Stefan was a loyal employee to Montry. We're going to certainly miss him. Yes, absolutely. You want to cover the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, Montryers, first let me say it's good to be back at Montry. When I spoke with the mayor and other commissioners over the past several days, it was just a really good thing for me to come back. I can almost say home. And thank you for your willingness to work with me. Although it's only been six or eight weeks, there's been a lot that's going on. And we're all going to roll up our sleeves for the betterment of this town. So be patient and be understanding, and we'll get through this. And Montry's a strong community, and it's stronger than any one person or one group. And I'm proud to be back and thank you again for all your support. That being said, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we would ask that the consent agenda be adopted as written.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything on your report or anything, or did you just do that?
I just did that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let me tell you, when I contacted Ben originally over the weekend, I asked him if he'd come back and help us with the budget. The local government commission has, since we were on their watch list for a couple of years because of the audit delays, they had asked us to have our budget in by the 13th of this month. When you lose the town manager right before the budget's due, the 13th of the month, I called Ben and I said, Ben, come help us with the budget. So he said, I can't be there till Tuesday, but I'm loyal to Montry and I'll be there Tuesday. And when he got here Tuesday, we finally did some talking and shaking hands. And on Wednesday, we swore him in again. So it is good to have you back then. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, you have the administrative reports from the administration department, the planning and zoning, police, public works and water, sanitation, streets, finance, and additional planning and zoning information. Are there any questions and or comments on any of those reports? Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment period, anyone? Floor's open for public comment. Yes, Martha?
Thank you. I was glad that we had a chance. Oh, Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. I was glad that the public had a chance to read the notes, the minutes really, from your budget workshop. Having been on the council, I remember those workshops and how much time it takes to prepare a budget. And I want to thank you for what you're doing and for your diligence in listening to lots of ideas. There's always many more things that could be funded than you can fund. That's just kind of how it works, kind of like at home. You'd like to do more things than you can sometimes do. But thank you for your work doing that. I have a couple of comments. I know you're still going to be doing some more processing. First of all, maybe you have noticed, and this is in relation to staff salary increases. I'm a real proponent of raising salaries every year. We did it when I was on the council. It was even done in 2009. Because we have one of the hardest working staff groups that I've ever been around. And several names have already been mentioned tonight, but the others, you know, really fall also in that category. You may have noticed that the city of Asheville's budget that was released a day ago talks about that item. And as we want to keep the people we have, I mean, if you haven't found it, you can Google Asheville salary increases. But it says employee compensation adjustments that reflect inflation in the labor market and local cost of living increases, including a 5% salary increase for existing employees or 6% salary increase for sworn police officers. So just to keep in mind that we have competitors out there who are also interested in hanging on to their employees and finding some experienced, well-qualified employees. So I hope you'll be able to work towards some goals to really increase the staff salaries. I was also interested in a discussion that you had on adjustments to the replacement policies for vehicles. I think it's having public safety vehicles and equipment in excellent and updated condition is not an option. And I think you all know that. The request, I mean, the policy has been 10 years or 10,000 miles on a police vehicle. Now, we happen to have a 1997 vehicle with over 200,000 miles. So I think, oh, only 100,000. But that's not the same as a police vehicle. That needs to be always in excellent condition. So I suggest that you not increase the replacement miles or years. Hindsight's always great when you're off the council and you look back and say, oh, yeah, wish we had done that. And I want to say that I'm not opposed to tax increases. I do wish, in hindsight, that maybe we had increased taxes more at a time years ago when the council did increase taxes. Because there's so many unforeseen circumstances. And it's not, in my opinion, it's not a good idea to change budgets when you have an unforeseen circumstance by either affecting staff salaries or items that are on the CIP. So I'm not opposed to it. We have a lot of expenses, and we have an unknown future expense with the lawsuit. So thank you so much, and thanks for all your work on the budget.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? Ain't no one. Move on to old business, have none, on the new business item A. Patty Pile, Jean Norris is going to present this.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. I'm here on behalf of Land Care Committee with Jean Norris and Grace Nichols. We form sort of a project team within Land Care dedicated to this project, Flat Creek Crossing. So already in your possession is the first of what we think will be several grant applications we'll be submitting to various funding sources. As you might remember from our presentations last year, Land Care is assuming all financial responsibility for this project. So this particular grant is called an environmental enhancement grant. It's administered by the State of North Carolina Department of Justice, and it grew out of a multimillion-dollar settlement agreement with Smithfield Foods. So in the eastern part of the state, they made this agreement with the Department of Justice to take care of abandoned hog ponds. So about $42 million has been already awarded through this program. It ends for sure in 2027. They did extend it during COVID. But these grants are awarded only to projects that either improve or protect air, land, or water. They consider requests from $5,000 up to $500,000, but they're in four distinct categories. You have to apply either as a construction project, a land acquisition project, a research project, or what we're doing is going after a $50,000 small grant. So we're in that small grant category. So to meet the objectives of the program, Flat Creek Crossing is described in the application packet with an emphasis on protecting the creek. So this new trail will indeed protect the creek. It'll improve stormwater mitigation through a new catchment system, through planting, repairing a buffer, stabilizing the creek bank, adding boulders to the uphill slope, just improving that stormwater mitigation, getting rid of the concrete that exists on the site right now. And we'll also use the signage along the trail to educate the public, not just about our trout and our salamanders and our plants and natives and invasives, but also about our precious watershed and what individuals can do on their own properties to protect not only Flat Creek, but all the creeks in Montry. So another objective of this EEG, Environmental Enhancement Grant Program, is to meet the needs of an underserved or a vulnerable population. So this is the part of Flat Creek Crossing that you've heard a lot about before, and that's the fact that the trail is handicap accessible, ADA compliant. And it provides an entry point into the natural environment for those living with disabilities and for the elderly. So our original vision for this project has not changed. We want everyone to be able to get to the creek. And we see accessibility as an issue of environmental justice, and that is a really key feature of this environmental grant program. So we've worked really diligently to put together the most complete application. Our professional consultant, April Carter, has done really thorough research, and we've carefully included all the necessary attachments. And all that's needed now is the mayor's signature on the letter of commitment. And then we can submit the packet before the deadline, which just happens to be tomorrow. So you saw me already talking to Angie to see if we can get the hopefully signed letter scanned so we can send it. Because everything for this grant is done electronically. So we have logged some pretty long hours. I counted up 64 hours already just to write this grant. There have been some late nights and some very ambitious wordsmithing going on. It has really been a learning experience for us. And we can use what we've developed here for future grant applications. So our confidence in this project is still really high. So with or without this grant, we hope, no, we plan. That's an Eric Nichols improvement on the word hope. We plan open Flat Creek Crossing July 4th, 2025. That's it. Thanks again for listening.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of commitment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet and a second from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion and or comments on this?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I knew that you were writing a grant, but when I read it, I was blown away by how much you had to write and how well it was done. So it really is a work of art, and thank you all for doing that. And like you say, we've got something that not only you can use, but it's information that we can enjoy and use.
Anyone else? Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. You got the letter signed? Okay. Thought I did that before we started. Now, I do that on occasion, and Angie says if that doesn't pass, I'll tear it up. Consideration of budget amendment number two. I'm familiar with this one since I've chaired the Comprehensive Long Range Planning Committee. Back, oh, probably five, six months ago, the members of the board of the committee wanted to have an additional meeting with MDS and have some additional information included in the long-range plan. And it cost about $3,900 additional. And I forget who the town interim town manager was at that time, said, we can find it somewhere. So hopefully y'all will approve this $3,900 that we've already spent over and above the budget. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the budget amendment number two in the amount of $3,900 to fund the final payment of the comprehensive plan update.
Thank you. Have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Any discussion and or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Consideration of a budget amendment number three. There is an amount of $1,500 of move monies to cover IT billing. Who knows about IT?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, members of Montry. This is just another housekeeping, financial cleanup in regard to moving money out of contracted services from the building line item into contracted services to address the overages in the IT line item. And you're correct, it's for $1,500.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. Motion was by Commissioner, by Mayor Pro Tim Blake. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to ask Ben to comment on the fact, should we be concerned that there was a $1,500 overage for the month? Is any issues there?
No particular issues. I think that there were some additional IT things that we needed done. The last town manager put some security on Barry's computer. We had a lot of spam issues. So I guess just additional expenses related to IT.
For clarification, this should be not just for the month of May. This should go through June 30th, this budget amendment.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry. Consideration of grant project ordinance. Rachel?
I'll be glad to, again, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, this is a housekeeping measure in regard to the ARPA monies that the town received. The town has been given $277,266. Out of that, all but around $83,000 has been already either allocated or encumbered. So the town board and staff will be working together in the coming days to see about the other $83,000. That has to be encumbered before December 31 of 2023. So we're in that process. But again, we're asking that the Board of Commissioners adopt this ordinance to be in compliance with the receipt of the ARPA monies. It's just a housekeeping measure.
Do I have a motion?
Very fast tonight. I'll make a motion to adopt the grant project ordinance for Town of Montry American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, coronavirus state and Merple fiscal recovery funds.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second? Second from Mayor Pro Tim Blake. Discussion and or questions?
Ben, you and I talked about this this afternoon. We, for some of those funds, we had projects outlined. This does not affect those projects, specifically the generator and the water tank inspection, plus other items that we started to talk about in the budget session.
Not at all, no, sir. Those are still covered with these ARPA funds.
Any other questions? Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes carry. Item D is Consideration of Proclamation, designate in May 21 through 27, 2023, as the Town of Montreat's First Public Works Appreciation Week. Angie?
So Barry and the guys have always given me a hard time about Town Clerk Week for some reason. Just because you do the agenda doesn't mean you make up the week. It's really legitimate. So I decided I was gonna research when Public Works Appreciation Week was, and so it's coming up. And they're really the hardest working people in Montreat. They work out in the heat, the cold, all the snow, the rain. They do the trash, which that right there would put me over the edge. So they really need to be thanked and appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion? Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet and Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Congratulations. Barry, you got a week all to yourself now. Item E is to consider of updating signatures on the First Bank Depository Accounts. Angie?
This is just removing the prior town manager and adding the interim town manager's name back on the checking accounts. Everyone else stayed the same? Just a little paperwork.
Have a motion. Do I have a, have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint the following signers on the Town of Montreat Depository Accounts at First Bank. Interim Town Manager Ben Blackburn, Ben T. Blackburn, Jr., Town Clerk Angela Murphy, Mayor Tim Helms, Commissioner Catherine Kitty Fouchet, and Police Chief David Aaron.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. Discussion and our questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Opposed? No opposed. Motion carries. Consideration of Setting a Public Hearing Regarding Physical Year 2324 Proposed Budget. Ben?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, town staff would request that the Commissioners consider setting a public hearing date for the next regular meeting of the Town of Montreat, which I believe is June 8th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes carry. Consideration of Setting a Special Meeting Regarding Budget Work, the Budget Work Session. I think this is going to take some work, though, isn't it? Select a date.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any suggested dates, Ben, or?
Talking with our Finance Director, if it would be possible sometime week after next, we should have it assembled and polished and ready for the Commissioners to look at it and then submit it for a public evaluation as well. No, sir. I'll leave that up to you, but if it could be week after next.
With midweek or early week or late week, be darn better. Pull up the calendar here.
The week starts on the 29th. Well, that's like 22nd, 22nd. Oh, 22nd. Okay, I'm sorry.
What's the 24th look like to everybody? Wednesday, the 24th?
Work until 1:00. Or volunteer. Meet at 1:00.
Well, she says she can meet at 1:00. Would that suit you? Jane, how about you? Okay. Kitty, you're okay at 1:00. Mr. Working Man? Okay. All right, let's set it at 1:00. 1:00 PM, Town Hall. On that Wednesday. What's that Wednesday date again, Kitty? 24. Okay. Good deal. That didn't hurt. Okay. All right, 24 is at 1:00 PM. Public comment. Floor is open for public comment. Wait a minute, I don't, I didn't, I need a motion on that. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move to set the special meeting on May 24th at 1:00 PM for the purpose of holding a Budget Work Session.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Widmer. Motion was by Commissioner Alexander. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes carry. Floor is open for public comment. Anyone? Mary?
Chairman Doris Terex, and I want to thank you for all your hard work. And I also, looking down at the dates, upcoming dates, it looks like the Planning and Zoning Committee is going to be hard at work, too, with a meeting of the Hillside Subcommittee on the 14th, and then there's to be a Planning and Zoning Special Meeting on the 15th at 10:30. So I know I can't ask a question at this point in time, but I hadn't read that far down in the agenda. But I am assuming that we will get the agenda and all the backup information about what's going to be happening in those meetings sent out to the public prior to them occurring. Agenda and the backup meetings on those things that are being covered, sent out. Thank you very much. Thank you. Look forward to hearing what you're doing.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Saying no one, jumping up. Commissioners' comments?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. First, since we are in the mood to give kudos, I'd like to give a kudo to Daniel Wiggs, who I found out in the middle of Tennessee on Monday morning, trash day, picking up and a, one of those green barrels that the bear had gotten into, and it was all over Tennessee Road. And Daniel, even though he's not sanitation, stopped and picked all of that up himself. And I'm grateful to Daniel for doing that. Second thing is Mason and I just wanted to give a quick update on the Tennessee Road Bridge project that has been hanging on for quite a long time. What did I say? Tennessee? Is there a bridge on Tennessee? Texas Road Bridge? No, thank you. You'll recall that we received a $191,000 grant from the MPO, the Local Metropolitan Planning Organization, about a year ago. And we were pleased to hear that they are moving that funding up to this year. We thought there were a lot of strings attached. We find out there really aren't, that they will handle those strings for us. And we had a meeting with them yesterday to discuss what our options were. Quite frankly, we thought with some changes, which Mason will talk about in the overall approach to the bridge, that we might lose that money. But we found out that in fact, we would not lose it, but they were quite happy that we were making those changes. You want to share about those changes?
We found out really beginning in January of this year. We, all along, and there's several members of the Bridge Committee here, we thought we would be repairing the bridge and repairing the abutment on either side of the bridge and some of the head walls. And so we had been talking about repairing those. But the initial plans for the repairs, which were scheduled to be done several years ago, but were delayed because of COVID, it provided for a drainage system to be installed behind the timbers, and that's what the existing abutment is made of, timbers. Because they were deteriorating, and the drainage would keep that deterioration from happening further. And what we found out is that the intervening three years without a drainage system in place, because we never started the construction, the deterioration was much worse than anybody imagined, to the point that repairing the abutment was no longer the proper manner to go about. Yet, because we would basically have to be replacing that abutment fairly, you know, within a relatively short time period. So what the engineers, what essentially we ultimately decided after a number of discussions with the engineers, is rather than repair the bridge, we need to replace the bridge. Or actually, we needed to replace the abutment. Well, once you've replaced the abutment, you got to pull up the whole bridge. And once you put up the, pull up the whole bridge, it's really more practical and more cost-effective to replace the bridge. Because you can get the bridge pre-engineered and pre-made from timbers much more cheaply than you can redesign putting that bridge back with, with new materials on a stick-built basis. It's almost twice as expensive to do that. So once you, once you cross the Rubicon of replacing the abutments, you're into a new bridge, and the most effective way to do it is a pre-built bridge, a pre-engineered bridge. And that's the direction we're going. And we had the meeting, as Tom said yesterday, we were pleasantly surprised. This all worked out into their package. And I can also report that, that they're really running with it right away. And it's, it looks like things are really on track to get going. Tommy and I think.
Any other Commissioners' comments? Jane?
I would like to comment about these two people on either side of me. I, Tom went after that grant, forgot it. And then Mason has followed up, and it's all coming together because of these two. Thank you very much.
Just again, kudos. When will you find out about the grant? Oh, I'm sorry, Patty. So deadlines tomorrow. Panels review all the grant applications in June and July. In August, the recommendations are made to the Attorney General, who makes the final decision, and then we'll find out in fall. Thanks.
Mason?
I'd like to make one other comment regarding Public Works' hearing, they're having their back slapped. I'm going to slap it one more time. I know all of us, all of us went through all the wind that happened a couple of weeks ago, week ago. And I want you to know, because of our arborist, which is Daniel Wiggs, and congratulating him again, as well as the gentleman back there in the rear of the room that runs the whole show, Barry, there wasn't a tree that I saw anywhere in Montreat that was, that was blown over by that wind, because they've been out there checking them, making, making sure we take them down when we need to take them down. And that not only saves us a mess on the roads, but it saves powers being out and a lot of other inconveniences for the town. So thank you very much, Barry, and please convey our thanks to Dan.
Any other Commissioner communication? Dates to Remember, the Tree Board meets Tuesday, May 23rd at 9:30 AM in the Town Hall. Town offices close Monday, May 29th in observation of Memorial Day. Sanitation services will resume on Tuesday, May 30th. Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting on Tuesday, May 30th at 10:00 AM in Town Hall. And I hope we're about to wind that up. I think we're getting close. Land Care, Wednesday, June 7th at 9:00 AM in Town Hall. June, Board of Commissioners meeting, Thursday, June 8th, 7:00 PM. Public Forum to begin at 6:30. We'll also have our budget presentation that night, also, public hearing. PZC Hillside Development Subcommittee meeting Wednesday, June 14th at 4:00 PM. Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting, Thursday, June 15th at 10:30 AM in Town Hall. Board of Adjustment tentatively will meet Thursday, June 22nd at 5:00 PM. Tree Board, Tuesday, June 27th at 9:30 AM in Town Hall. And let me say this as we adjourn. If it weren't for the volunteers and the people of Montreat working together with the staff, we would have a heck of a, heck of a messy community. But thanks to everyone in this room and those who volunteer and those who work for the town and other organizations, the College and MRA, we have an absolutely outstanding community. And as one of my planning and, one of the long-range planning members said, Daniel Hewitt, we were looking for some words one day, and Daniel said, "Montreat is a place set apart." And he's true. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Y'all want to stay here? So move from Kitty Fouchet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned, and thank you all so much.